All right.
Well, just very quickly, Cal, I'm John Kowalszko with the Airport Authority. And Sean, Paula, Jim, Rick. Let's go next. Rick, can you introduce yourself?
Hi, I'm Rick Hangan, Board Member Municipal Airport Authority and Business Owner at Fargo.
Jim?
Jim, Captain, Airport Authority Board Member and Cass County Commissioner.
I'm Paula Ekman, Board Member and Business Owner and travel extraordinary.
Brandon Anderson, Air Traffic Manager at Fargo Tower and Trade Center.
I'm Jeff Fine with Mead Hunt in Fargo for the airport extension here.
I'm George Dahl, Airport Authority.
And Aaron Axon with Airport Authority.
We have our Fire Chief on, Chad Noyes, and Austin Boyle, I see you're on as well. Thanks for joining.
Yeah, everybody, Austin Boyle with Air to the Air Life Airport Affairs.
All right, well, thanks, everybody, for being here. This is actually a public meeting where we're going to deal with a formal board meeting at this point, but it will be recorded and so any comments are available. It will then be recorded if anybody's inquiring and, of course, anybody could come into the room at this point. Our goal here is to hopefully share information where we are in the whole project. And as we go through the process and starting to make some solid progress, really wanted to just make sure that we're looking at every potential funding source that we have available. And as we work through this, it's going to be a challenging time, it looks like. Trying to figure out construction costs as we slide through everything moving around and those type of things. Please feel free at any point, if there are things you're looking or looking at, information you want, we're going to try to be as open book as we can and share with complete transparency. So any ideas, we're willing to pursue anything at this point and go through the process. Sean, maybe you want to kick it off here and we'll kind of do a fly-through with you and show you just what it's going to look like as we go through it. And at the same time, look at where our funding is at this point.
No, I think we'll just kick it right to Tom Shower from Mead and Hunt to start the presentation. And maybe, Tom, just give a little background there so people understand your time with the FAA and so forth.
Okay, thanks, Sean. Yeah, my name is Tom Shower.
Tom, one time, let's do a little time check. We've got, what, 45, 50 minutes that we should target to be done by about 12:30, I think. So everybody's been, let's keep that in mind and see what we can get through. Thanks.
My goal, to be quick and brief and to give a quick highlight of them, just a little bit of my background. I currently work for Mead and Hunt as a Senior Aviation Advisor. Prior to working in the private sector, I served with the FAA for 24 years. Most recently, with the FAA side, I was the Airport District Office Manager overseeing North Dakota and South Dakota. Prior to that, I was also working as the FAA's Regional Engineer and Compliance Officer out of Chicago. I did it remotely out of Bismarck, though. So about 24 years of experience dealing with federal funding projects like this. In the private side, I've worked on some of the major projects in the states like the New Wilson Airport, the Minot Terminal, was involved in the Bismarck Terminal from an FAA perspective back in the day. Currently working on a couple other terminal projects as well on just the funding and the side of it, trying to help understand things like that. So that's kind of the perspective I come from. As we walk through these, it'll become clear, hopefully, kind of how we want to engage the Senator's office, see if they can assist us in any funding. Hopefully, you can see a kickoff screen with the presentation on it.
Cal, can you see that? Austin?
Yes, I can see it.
Yes, I can see it, it's great. Okay, perfect. And I'll make this as briefly as I can. Wanted to start out just talking a little bit and just recapping a couple of high-level slides. A lot of you have seen these already, but I just wanted to go over some of the key problems that the airport currently has is their current checkpoint queuing is you come immediately up the escalator. It's limited to the three screening lanes, which is getting to be at capacity. So this is one of the points, and I have that highlighted in yellow there, that is a point of issue. Here's an image that was taken within the last couple of months where you actually see, once the checkpoint area gets full, you leave the stations and people can just wander or meander their way through it. You can see a lady up on the right that's just pulling her blue bag up toward the getting in line. They have to keep a gap for people exiting. This is one of the problems we're having in today's terminal. So just want to highlight some of the things like that. What we're proposing in the terminal is as you come up the stairs on the left, you'll see the area. You'll walk up where the circulation is still now, instead of going straight, you'll take a right turn. You'll go into the checkpoint area, which does a couple different things for you. It gets you out of that immediate walkway when you come up the escalators. Much more room for queuing, also allows you to go to four checkpoint check lanes. It also leaves an area on the right with a circle in red for putting on your belts and your jackets and things like that. So a little bit of regrouping area where you're not in an immediate walkway. One of the things is you'll look, you'll get out, and you'll see the circulation area. This is the area where you're going back and forth between different gates. So we'll talk a little bit about that in this next slide. Is we also have the circulation problem where when you come out of the checkpoint right now, you're going right where two gates load and unload. You have other areas where you have conflict between the circulation routes and loading and unloading. So this is another problem with the existing terminal. And we see things like this happen, especially as terminals that have been around along the farthest progress through different evolutions in time. The TSA processes have changed, all the different things have kind of morphed and changed through time. Our solutions are to try to find ways to fix that as well. This is just an image looking down to the west where you'll see people walking. It's a very narrow walkway in the circulation. As well as right to the right, you'll see out the window, you can see one of the gates. So you can imagine when you're queuing in line to go through the gates and you have people walking through this area, you have a direct conflict, makes travel in and out of those areas quite difficult and congested. Hold rooms size are also things that are an issue. The airports have gone through a variety of things. Really been around a long time, the philosophy long ago used to be the more traffic you get, the bigger the aircraft you get in and out. Then it went to regional jets, which were going to be the greatest thing since sliced bread. Fifty passenger aircraft came in, we went through those cycles. When it was down at the 50 and smaller aircraft such as that, we saw change in terminals where concessions on the airside became much more effective and people understood that. So airports used a lot of their space that they had in the hold rooms to put in concessions because the aircraft didn't have the capacity of the bigger, older aircraft. Well, in the sequence of time, we're moving backwards bigger aircraft. Fargo's seeing more mainline aircraft, so the hold rooms need to get bigger as well. Right now, they're quite congested for the size of aircraft we're seeing. As we do more and more upgaging aircraft, you're seeing more and more of that congestion. So as we look at the solution in Fargo for the concourse, we're expanding to the east and adding the area in blue. That's allowing us to increase those hold rooms significantly to accommodate the larger aircraft. In addition to that, what it does with that area with the red arrow, it allows us to have circulation that's not directly in conflict with the gates. You'll notice all the gates to the right and even the gates in the center corridor of the existing terminal will no longer be in conflict with that circulation. So the airport has had numerous problems. We're working through each of these. As we add on to this concourse, we're also adding gates. Right now, one of the things Hector has done, Hector International Airport has been doing, is they've been shuffling airport aircraft between their secondary apron locations and the terminal so that they didn't need as large of a building. And it's highly commended, it's highly, it shows kind of the frugal attitude of people in the Dakotas. A lot of places in the country don't do that kind of maneuvering. Part of it is you have people shuffling aircraft that are, you know, $100 million aircraft being moved by people that are not making an overly large number of money. They're moving them back and forth between traffic. It includes more risk to aircraft damage as well as just operational impact between different aircraft and tugs moving in and out of the apron area. So by allowing more gates, it minimizes the need to do that. It still will be done, but it greatly minimizes that, reducing some of the written error risks of moving aircraft. So as we go through this process, it takes a lot of that into consideration in the terminal build. One of the last items I want to cover is the TSA checkpoint. When TSA came on board back in, after 9/11, Fargo worked closely with TSA and their engineers and architects to come up with solutions. So they found some areas to squeeze in the existing baggage machines. And these have kind of gone through an evolution on their own, whether they look like a power in, power out, all the different things. This is actually a screenshot of what it looks like in their current existence. It's limited to two, so it's pretty full. In addition to that, then, the baggage carousel off the back is one loop. And what you see here is the bags go around the loop. The tug cart operators back their tug carts in perpendicular, which is either done by hand or some complex maneuvers with tugs, forcing them to do a lot more manual labor, making it very inefficient and difficult for the staff. So as we look at those solutions, what we're proposing is one that will expand that area behind the ticketing counter that will allow increasing capacity to three baggage screeners. And in addition to that, it will run it to a different part of the back of the terminal where we'll have two carousels. This will allow separating some of the bags between the different airlines. In addition, this allows you, the tug operators, to pull right up next to the carousel. There will be bollards to protect the carousel themselves. But at that point now, it's taking a lot of the manual labor out of it. It's also allowing the people to slide and throw the bags from the carts onto the, from the carousel onto the carts, making it much easier and less energy used by the staff. These are big things, too, when you're trying to find staff. Anything you can do to make their jobs easier is a good thing. So this is the solution that we're looking at. And so I just wanted to give a high level of kind of the problem and what the solutions that are being taken. Any questions on that?
Nope.
One question.
I apologize.
Tom, one quick question. So as far as the screening area, will there be room to add clear if clear were ever to come to Fargo?
My understanding is through the checkpoint, for TSA checkpoints, is that to have enough room that we can relay out the stations to have clear and/or, you know, we have the TSA pre-check. And so a lot of those, you know, just flip back to the slide so it makes it a little easier to see. Apologize, I'm not trying to make anybody sick. But with this increased space in the green area, I'm colorblind, so if I reference a color and I'm off, just humor me and pretend it's that color. The green area here, the increase of size allows the airport a lot of flexibility to react to different things and reconfigure the stations in a manner that would accommodate clear TSA pre-check and different items like that. Generally, just draw a straight line in here just to kind of give the feel for how much queuing you actually have.
Okay, thank you.
Having said that, let's jump into the real reason. I know the Senator's staff have never been asked for money in life, so we'll just get to the chase and talk about money. One item, just recap of the items, limited terminal capacity, this is at checkpoint, the hold room, things like that. This is one of the things, this problem, or the solutions to all deal with. The aircraft gates, getting more gates, things like that, so we can have more destinations. And the baggage makeup area as well gets resolved in that. As we go into the funding considerations, I want to embrace everything because some of the prior slides, the funding of the terminal has been primarily the numbers shown. But one of the things I think is important when dealing with the Federal Aviation Administration, as well as with congressional delegates and things like that, is you have the terminal building, which is obviously the focus of construction. With that, though, you also have the associated apron space that goes with that. You can't really have a functional terminal without the apron. Can't have a functional terminal without any of those features. Also, as you have aprons, you have de-icing and stuff like that. So when you take these numbers, and these numbers are the same numbers you've had as an airport, it's now just one composite number. The terminal building, the new apron, along with rehabbing the old apron, which is in dire need of rehab, the elevated walkway, and the airport, just the ground parking next to the terminal. I'm not talking any other parking, but there's just some terminal parking that's off to the side. All that rolled in is roughly $155 million. And these are the same numbers that you've been seeing. I've worked with Steve Horton and Lee Wirtz and Horton Staff. So these numbers are nothing different than you've seen there. It's just a different way of viewing them. So those are the costs. These numbers will be slightly different because from what you've seen, these are the federal asks that we're looking for. So when we look at federal funding, the airport gets money in a couple of different ways. One is they get past their entitlements every year based on the number of entitlements they get. In addition to that, they get, because of the bill funding package for the five-year period, they get bill AIG funding, Airport Infrastructure Grants. Those will be going towards $22.7 million of that. Those are not competitive, those the airports get as an entitlement. So $22.7 million of funding from that will be put towards the airport. In addition to that, and these are more important, is the competitive elements of funding are key. So as we put to the end of these presentations, we will be working and have been working with the FAA at a local level because we will be asking them for discretionary funding for the apron of roughly $31.1 million. And that really is the number for the airport for apron cost times .9, which is your 90% participation. Those are competing with other airports across the country and within the state. So that's why I have behind it, just making people aware that that is a competitive natured project. In addition to that, we have the Bill ATP or Airport Terminal Program. We're going to be seeking $27.1 million. These don't have to come in any one year. And Cal, I still have an idea to you to give, to you to give a kind of a phase outbreak that could work with these. In general, if we could get half of these in the next couple of years would be great. If we had to divide it over three years, that would be tolerable as well. These align, though, we try to align these with the burn rate for the project costs to match up. Discretionary and bill ATP cannot be used for reimbursement. So as we look at, that's really the federal picture on this. One of the things to note is congressionally designated expenditures are a little unique because historically, what they've been coming out of is a separate set of funding called supplemental funding, very, very similar to airport improvement or the AIP discretionary. But it comes through what has simply been referred to as earmarks. But now they've changed the name to relatively congressionally designated expenditures or spending. Those could substitute for any one of these as well. Bill ATP, though, is the only thing that can be used on the physical terminal itself. The AIP laws do not allow discretionary funding to be used for the terminal structure. So that's where you'll see the AIP discretionary is set up for the apron. And it can only be used on the apron. So as we work through this funding plan, the types of money or the color of money really does make a difference. So again, we'll be working with you and asking you, whatever you can do is to help on, especially on the ATP funding. These are things we will be working with the FAA as well and applying for those. Right now, the NOFO or Notice of Funding Opportunities for the Bill ATP is out. We will be completing that, working with Sean's staff to get that done, highlighting the different elements that are important to the current administration, making us or allowing us to compete as good as possible. Any congressional assistance in that is always appreciated. So if you have a chance to put in a good word with the FAA, a congressional delegates letter is always helpful. Sean and I are scheduling a meeting to go to Chicago to meet with the regional office leadership to where we will also brief on the project and the validness of the project and the justification on the project and why the airport or the FAA is airport division. Support of this is critical. In addition to that, once we get down to the regional level, it's, I found it is very effective to go to the national level and meet with the national leaders. Nothing against the different levels of the FAA, but no one has the passion and carries that message better than the people itself that need to live with this facility. So we will be scheduling that and working our way through to go for the federal ask. In addition to this, as we go through and talk to the federal government, the federal program has been at the same level for many, many years with exception of some key thing. Most recently is the bill funding. So what's happened is big projects like this have to look at not only the federal system, they have to look at what the state can do and what locally we can do. And this does help leverage the FAA into funding and supporting these projects. So when we go through this, we will also be talking to the FAA about what we're asking from the state and locally. This is something that may be a little surprising, I want to be very clear. There's a $40 million ask there. I think there's room on the state side to even go a little more. We will be working with state legislators to see if we can find a way for the state to give a direct allocation towards the Fargo terminal. A lot of times, these are not designated specifically by name, but to the North Dakota Aeronautics Commission that are working with delegates to understand that, okay, if we give you X amount of direct allocation, it would come to a project such as Fargo. What that allows is the state aeronautics, if Fargo didn't need the full allotment, that money could be reallocated to another airport. So we will be working with state aeronautics, and we've also already briefed the state aeronautics commission. But we will be working, Sean and the staff and I, so we'll be working with the state legislators to see if there's a way to get a direct allocation in the next biennium. This is not unlike airports, Dickinson received some funding in this manner. Wilson received funding in this manner. Watford City has received funding in this manner. And so Fargo being the largest airport in the state, also being the corridor for cargo, air cargo, that feeds the rest of the North Dakota airports, is really one of the things that is not an unreasonable ask. It helps us leverage the federal government for additional funds because we're showing that this funding package isn't predicated on any one particular entity, but a team trying to lift a generational project like this up into existence. Having said that, we're down to then the local funds, and the remaining number on that is about $29.7 million. What that means is, Sean, the plan you're seeing already is your $21.7 million coming out of cash reserves, and then you would have a debt of $8 million to borrow upon. Now, I understand that the airport has secured funding or some financial arrangements with the Bank of North Dakota where they can borrow up to $40 million. My goal is not to put you in financial distress, so if we can get the state and federal money at these levels, it puts you at a level where you have skin in the game and you're doing your part. But we haven't put you in a manner that you're financially, you know, on a weaker point. This is really important because as an airport goes forward, not only do you have the terminal project, you have a lot of other projects that are in play over the next five to 10 years that are critical. And so I am not getting into, when we talk to the congressional delegates at a state and local level, we're not going to necessarily get into some of these projects and the funding detail. But I do want to highlight that you do have a South General Aviation Apron, a parking garage, and Runway 927 projects that are coming up sometime in the next five to 10 years. So we do want to make sure that we're not short sighted and overlooking some of those. These numbers, again, are tied into the numbers that you've been seeing in the past from Lee Wirtz and Horton. So I just want to be very clear that the biggest differences are asks are much, are higher than what Lee Wirtz and Horton showed. They're trying to be very more pragmatic in their view. We think it's critical that the FAA and the state come to the table and help in a project of this magnitude. Having said that, I guess I'll open it up the questions, and I can go back and reiterate anything, cover anything, or answer any other questions.
Can we go back one slide, please, for one second?
Tom, can you go back one? There you go. And you can get a copy of this presentation, too, Jessica.
That'd be great.
Or anyone that wants a copy.
Yeah, we can make it. Thoughts, questions? Typically, what we're seeing on ATP funding, just to give you a little bit of background, between $10 and $15 million a year is what we're typically seeing on ATP. I was just involved last year, one of our clients that I was working with got $11.9. I know another one, they want, they got $15 to $20. We work with numerous airports and trying to put together the justification packages to help people understand why what we're spending is not outrageous and why what we're doing is needed. We understand that we're all, you know, stewards of the tax rate of dollars. We want to make sure that they understand the value of exactly what they're, why they need it and what they're getting in exchange for their funds.
So there's $3 billion left in the ATP fund. There's a billion this year, a billion the following year, and a billion after that. The first two billion have already been allocated. You're probably aware, Ashley, North Dakota was in the first billion, and then there was Rugby, and there was two other small general aviation airports included in the second billion. It's now the third billion is out, their applications are due in October, and we're working on putting those together. So this would be an opportunity for the congressional delegation to try and come up with some ATP funds for us.
And that billion dollars, Sean, as you know, is divided up on the different categories of airports. So Small Hub, which is your category, is really one of the better hubs to be in, or categories to be in. So I'm optimistic that we'll have some success. But again, the reason we go to the regional and national level is if they don't fully understand your projects and the need for it, they get a lot of requests. We want to make sure they understand first and foremost the importance of this to the community, to the state, and how this is, you guys have been incredibly frugal with your resources and have not overbuilt. You guys are greatly undersized for the amount of traffic you're going through here. Like I said, Fargo does a lot of moving of aircraft, which is not very common. And if the Sean and the team have done a great job working to maximize the value at the Hector International Airport, we need to make sure that we're ready for the next phase of life when they increase growth in aviation.
So we were told at the EEE conference in Spokane here a couple of weeks ago that they expect somewhere between $10 and $15 billion of requests for that billion dollars. So that's very competitive to try to get that, those funds.
Yeah. Well, Sean, I'll turn it over to Cal, because it's far more important that she understands all of this than I do. But I spent a fair amount of time with the Senator, and this is a topic that's come up. As you know, he's worked really hard at the, on the airports around the state. I mean, there is pride and joy. I mean, he loves, he tells our visitors to, you know, go visit our airports because they're the best you can find. So we know that he's very supportive of this project and the team and your plan. He's glad to see that it's happening and, you know, he's going to run through walls to make it happen for you. But he's also pretty hyper-focused on knowing how much money you need, and you just went through it brilliantly, how much money you need, from what programs, and when you need it. So I'm sure all of that information was in that presentation, but I want to make sure that Cal has what she needs. But I mean, for us, that's the most important thing, is when do you need the money? From which programs do you need that money from? And we, you know, I don't know the best way to kind of break that down for us and the way to communicate back and forth. But at the end of the day, at the basic level, that's kind of, we just need...
We can work on that with Tom. I think one thing to reiterate, and Tom mentioned, is that we cannot reimburse ourselves for any portion of the project that is completed with discretionary dollars. So discretionary dollars have to be secured and under grant prior to starting any of the work. That's going to be difficult with this project, but it's something that we'll work with a contractor to be non-staffed to make happen.
Okay. At this point...
And I will be working, Jessica, to get a kind of a sequencing of when.
Right.
Because like right now, the most discretionary funding will come out from the FAA next time. So it follows this a little bit of frustrating because you're kind of at the mercy of how that money goes into the FAA, goes, turns through the system and comes out and gets put under grant. It goes, turns through the system and comes out and gets put under grant. ATP is kind of the same way, the way they're trying to get those out in June, July, and August. So we'll be requesting that money a lot earlier. So I'll kind of put together, cheat sheet work through with Sean, and kind of say, here's when we think the ask will go in. Here's where, you know, we would say this timeframe here is when the Senator's push would be probably the most effective. And then here's where we would anticipate it coming out of the sausage grinder and coming out into a grant.
Yeah.
We'll be working with the design team on aligning the construction with that funding.
Okay. Yeah, that sequencing is in.
And Tom, without getting too far in the weeds, can you explain the prohibition against small hub airports from getting discretionary grants for the terminal building?
Yeah, I, right now, under the, the current FAA reauthorization for airport improvement programs, they prevent, or they do not allow discretionary funding being used on the terminal building. And, and one may wonder why that is. As I said earlier, the AIP program hasn't changed in like twenty-some years for funding dollar amounts. So if, an example, if Fargo was sitting here and we were two thousand and three, you guys had the same passenger numbers, your entitlements would be the same. Your PFC amounts would be the same. But your terminal cost would be roughly, what we're seeing in the timeframe of two thousand to two thousand and twenty-three, terminals and runways are about three to four hundred percent more expensive. Well, if your total project was, you know, forty million dollars and your revenue was the same it is today, that would be a lot easier for you to handle. That's not the real world. Prices have gone up. Small hub airports cannot make that lift on their own. That is just not a, a tenable ask. And so that's really, it's all written in law. I have talked with Senator Hovind's staff, Cal specifically, on some of those reauthorizations, highlighting those, many organizations, Triple A E and all those, many airports have brought these forward. So this is a known issue, we're hoping in reauthorization, there's some consideration given to that. But that's really the issue on the small hub terminals.
And keep in mind, we're in the, about the bottom third of the small hub airports in terms of employments. There are some airports that are three times larger than us in employments that are considered a small hub. So, I mean, we're gonna cross, I mean, we're pretty confident, Gary and I were talking about this yesterday. I mean, our record boarding year was in twenty nineteen, about four hundred and seventy-five thousand passengers. This year, we think we're going to get to about five hundred and fifteen thousand, in, in that range. So the trajectory continues to go up. But yet, we're on the bottom third tier of those small hubs, and yet we're restrained by the federal language to not receive any of discretionary dollars. As a non-hub, we were capped at twenty million. Now that we're a small hub in the bottom tier, we can't get any of that. Which puts us at a real competitive disadvantage. Tom's got suggestive language to change that, so. And I think Cal is aware of it, and he was working with Tyler Hart prior, to try and get that language changed.
Any other questions?
That's really the extent of what we were going to show you today, and if there's anything else that you need.
Going back to, to just talk for a few minutes about some of the unique state funding. How much does that help us in leveraging other federal funds? We do have Bank of North Dakota, which, which is totally a unique tool to us. What can we do there? How, how big of an impact? We'd love to see low-cost state funding, but it's there.
Well, and what I tend to do, and this is a, you, you put yourself in kind of a unique situation. And, and I can tell you, having been an Air Force District Office Manager, if you walk into me and say, hey, I got a bunch of money I can borrow and I can do this, and I can really leverage myself, like I don't need as much of your money. In essence, if you feel you have to, in essence, I'm going, well, I got ten other people that need all the money in the world. You're covered, it sounds like. So.
Right.
I can find that middle ground where you're dealing with debt and saying, look. If the more debt you take on, the more, more issues that they pop up, you have limited ability to react. I tend to prefer to say, look, you, an airport should take on some debt. They should have adequate skin in the game. I'd prefer you to take less than more, because you have some specific projects, like even the ones that are shown on the bottom of the screen, your parking garage is not AIP eligible. Your runway nine two seven, any lengthening of that to make it an air, a full air carrier length runway is not eligible under current rules. So there are some things like that, you may have some very heavy lifting with your own funding. So we'd hate to have you, if we don't have to, borrow every dime you can. What we'd rather say is, look, if we can get the state of North Dakota, who has helped airports such as Williston, mine, Watford City, Dickinson with funding, we'd like them to take a chance to, you know, help Fargo, who again, like I said, is the largest airport in the state, serves also as your cargo hub for the state. Those would be where we'd more emphasize those to make sure that we're covered.
No, I understand, we, we certainly don't want to identify too many things that we, we'd go to the other side of it. I do think, as we present this, especially in federal agencies, that we emphasize this is incentive-based financing through the Bank of North Dakota and maybe even some direct legislative dollars. That it may look like debt and sound like debt, but when they're offering two percent money over a thirty-year period, there's a portion of that that is, in essence, grant-funded, just so that we emphasize that through this whole process. Sometimes it just gets lumped in there and looked at, oh yeah, that's just debt. But right now, two percent money at thirty years with some really liberal debt service coverage provisions of that, has a big portion of that being incentive. Really, however we would emphasize that, I think we should.
So is the delegation letter of support that you're interested in, is it something you want right away? Before your meeting in Chicago, or when?
It would coincide with the grant application, is typically what we've done in the past with, with the previous two applications. So we can, Tom, Evan, and Jeff will be working on, on the numbers with us. So we could get that timed up to maybe an October first letter.
Okay.
What, what date do you think should be on the letter, Tom?
Yeah, I would say if we, even if we did it before it goes to the congressional, or before it goes, we go to DC, what happens in the general process is the requests go up the chain, and then they have discussions on what they call their discretionary list and kind of work those out. We want to be, you know, even longer we have it by November, December timeframe, we're good. And, and so that's really when those decisions are starting to get pushed and, and squeezed and massage. So anytime in that, obviously, the sooner the better. But I wouldn't want to go much past the end of the year, otherwise, you know, we don't want decisions made. We want them knowing that this project is important and them understanding it from firsthand discussions with us and, and learning that. But then we also, it's important that they understand that the congressional delegates are fully aware of the project and also subscribe that this is important to the state of North Dakota and to the Fargo community.
Yeah, and I can just jump in here. Um, Tom, I appreciate your presentation, thanks everybody. That's why we, that I owe you of just the schedule of grants and the timing that you guys are looking at, how much, when you need it, et cetera. This is very important for us to have, so that we're able to kind of facilitate those CODL letters of support. And, you know, that we can go to those FAA meetings with you at the federal level, et cetera, just to show as much support as we can for you all.
Yeah, and that'll be great. We, we've had that before, and, and the Senator Hovind's office have always been very supportive of aviation projects, so we look forward to that, and we will coordinate, Cal, as soon as we get, get that set up, we'll get you some dates.
That'd be great, thanks, Tom.
You know, thank you, thank you all for taking, taking the time to do this. And the only thing going forward is again, just to reemphasize, Sean, and our board, whatever you need from us at whatever timeline, probably easiest is pointing to communicate directly with Sean. But if there's any part of this we need to engage, just let us know, and we will move very quickly to do it. I do kind of worry as we go forward, because there's risk in this, that we're going to have to make decisions on design and everything else based on anticipation of funding, which is a little uncomfortable, but it's, it's still more than I think we'll let go pass. So if there is any hangup at any point, you know, just communicate with us. We will react to it, do everything we can. We would also like to, as we've talked, when the Senator is in town, we would love to kind of, I know we probably wouldn't have an hour to deal with this, but if we could.
Yeah, or he'd give you an hour and a half.
Okay, all right.
The questions would be endless on his side.
You know, and, and if there's the opportunity for the Airport Authority to put this together, we'd love to do that, along with other elected officials, both state and local, as we all see the importance of the project. And we will, of course, you know, understand if there's something going on on a Friday or a football game. When NDSU beats U N D in football, he could probably be there for that, but.
I think he's watching that one at home.
That's a tough one to beat, so. Anything we can do there, and however we can move, just let us know.
Yeah, yeah, good. Thank you so much, and yeah, the more we communicate, I think the better. You know, let's not let any grass grow under our feet, don't think we know and assume we're tracking when we're not. You guys are living it day in, day out, so. I always appreciate the updates and the concerns or wins.
Perfect. Well, any, any, the last one that, all right, well, thank you everyone, now.
Yeah, thank you.